All right, about another minute for public comment forums. Hello, it is. It is 5:00 PM on Monday, September 15, 2025. This is a special board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, President Bumpus, we have Director Barnes, Director Ed Scorn, Director Campbell, Director Whitfield, Superintendent Sean Woodward, District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 1.05, Approval of the Agenda as our motion.
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated September 15, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve, sorry, let me get there, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated September 15, 2025. All in favor, raise your hand. The Agenda Item has passed 5 to 0. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 2.01, Student Reps. Myron, can you start us off?
Good afternoon, everyone. I don't really have much to report on because the school year just started for me. Well, actually for everyone in here. I guess it's good to be back and good to see all you guys and all these beautiful faces out there. Yeah.
Hi, everyone. I also, school hasn't even started for my school, Sky Valley, so not much to say. But it does officially start tomorrow. And I did just hear from Principal Rosenkranz that the last few rooms have been reopened from testing, so yay, just in time. In terms of what I've been doing in my first steps as a student representative, I've spoken with the ASB at Sky Valley to create a line of communication between me and the students there to kind of bring the discussions happening at the school board to the students there, specifically on things that do affect them. So it's looking like I'm going to be meeting with them monthly at their meetings on Fridays during the time off I have from Running Start this year, which I am doing full-time. Yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
Myron, you are a senior now. Are you excited? How's that feel?
I am excited. When the first day of school, when it started, I saw all the freshmen. And I was like, I actually kind of got a little sad because I was like, I'm about to graduate. And I remember my freshman year like it was yesterday. So I did get a little sad.
Awesome. Is there any classes that you're looking forward to this year?
Civics.
Civics, awesome, very cool. And I was not at the football game on Friday, but from someone who has firsthand account, how was it?
It was, it was good. It was very eventful, that's what I'll say.
Okay, awesome. It's good to see you back. Welcome back to Squeer.
Now, Myron, I would say that I heard you were making plays out there because I kept hearing your name on the intercom.
I was trying. I was doing my best. I was, yes, I will say I was making plays.
That's awesome. It's good to see you. Reno, welcome. Hey, Agenda Item 2.02, we have public comment. All right, we welcome value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is a policy, the Monroe School District, to promote mutual respect, stability, and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit comments to three minutes. A designated speaker per group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with the complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please know that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets a protected class, or exceeds the time limit. As the board president, I will determine the appropriateness of such rulings. Okay, when I call your name, state your name and your relationship to the school district. And first up, we have Juliana. Hi, Juliana.
Hi. Hello, my name is Juliana Elsie, and I'm a proud proud student at Sky Valley Education Center, and I am dedicated member of Academy of Critical Thinking. I'm asking that you consider building a new school for us. Sky Valley is an amazing place to learn. The classes are inspiring and teach important, meaningful things that help us grow as students and people. My education here is better than what I've experienced at traditional public school, and I feel truly supported in my learning. As a member of Academy of Critical Thinking, I have experienced firsthand how powerful and unique Sky Valley's programs are. The teachers care deeply about their students and go above and beyond every day. They deserve a safe and comfortable and well-equipped environment to continue their important work. Unfortunately, our building is old, not up to code, and consistently need of repairs. On top of this, our school is already underfunded. We often rely on fundraising and through potlucks and generosity of local businesses just to cover the cost of field trips and other opportunities that students in other schools may take for granted. While other public schools benefit from the new school buildings, Sky Valley students and staff continue to make the best of a space and budget that do not reflect the quality of education we receive. Please support a new school building for Sky Valley so that our environment can finally match the excellence of our teachers and learning that takes place here. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Juliana Elsie.
Thank you, Juliana. Okay, Daviana.
Hi. My name is Daviana. If we had a new building at Sky Valley, our school is underfunded, and I really love this school. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Daviana. Okay, Abel.
Good evening, members of the, good evening, members of the board, teachers, families, and community members. My name is Abel Grant, and I'm grateful to have the chance to speak with you tonight about why our school needs a new board building. Homeschooling is just as effective and important as public education, and our building should reflect that truth. In Washington State, homeschooling has grown significantly. About 20,000 students were homeschooled in 2019, nearly 39,000 during COVID, and around 28,000 today. That's a 40% increase in just a few years. Families are choosing this path because they believe in it and that commitment deserves facilities that match the quality of public school buildings. When you drive by public schools and such as Park Place Middle, you see beautiful, well-maintained campuses. They send the message that students, all students matter. But our building is different. It's all falling apart, and year after year, we face closures and remediation. In the four years that I've been here, the beginning of nearly every school year has been disrupted with classes displaced or even canceled. That instability affects our learning and sends the opposite message that our education isn't valued as highly. What makes Sky Valley Education special is the community. Sky Valley has many different types of people from all walks, families, structures, and ideologies that get along and share space in respectful way. In my time here, I've never experienced bullying or the kind of drama people associate with traditional public schools. Instead, I've been pushed to grow and take responsibility for my own education. In sixth grade, I wrote a research paper on quantum physics because my teachers challenged me to stretch my knowledge for my teachers to stretch my knowledge beyond what I thought I could learn. By the end of seventh grade, I'm working towards free algebra and math. My education may look different, but it is equally important, equally rigorous, and equally deserving of respect. Sky Valley represents the best of what education can be, safe, inclusive, challenging, and supportive. But our building doesn't reflect that reality. We need a facility that communicates pride in our students, stability in our learning, and confidence in our future. I ask you to consider funding a new building, not just for walls and roofs, but for the message it sends that every student and every type of school matters. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Abel. Heath, Heath or Heather?
Heather.
Heather. Hi, Heather. Yes, yes, yes.
Hi, I'm a parent at Sky Valley. My name's Heather Swift, and this will be my student's third year there. And I am also speaking to support a new building for the students and the faculty and parents at Sky Valley. We're newer family to the school, but we learned a lot about the process when the school was found to be unsafe years ago. I'm friends with some of the families who left the school at that time, and I understand a lot has gone into making the mitigation work, but that has also been very disruptive to the students and the teachers trying to teach their classes where there's no space for them to go. And they've had to scramble to find new places for classes to meet. And I support so much with the students that just came up here and bravely spoke. I can't put it in any better words than they already did. I just, as a parent and part of the community, I really wanted to advocate for this, for those students, for the faculty, for the parents and families. So, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Brandy.
Hi, Brandy Blair, community member and parent of four kids at Monroe School District. I do have children at Sky Valley. We've been there for 11 years. I also have children at the traditional schools. I was on the Facility Advisory Committee that the outcome was one of the recommendations to build a new Sky Valley. Besides the students who have spoke, I did want to remind everyone that the community members that didn't even have a relationship with Sky Valley were supportive of building a new Sky Valley. So I feel like that is the direction that we will probably be going. And this is very exciting. This could really transform that school complex area, connect students and the community. The decision of building a new Sky Valley will have a big impact on the future. And again, I'm pro for it and excited. I just want to be sure we get it right. And one of the things that I want to highlight is the location. So we have, we were given two options by the consulting firm, and I believe that there's a valid third option that has not really been talked about as much as it should, which is rebuilding on the site, the current Sky Valley site. And one of those reasons is, let me see here. The other thing I wanted to say besides the location is I think that reaching out to the community early on in this process, like now, in the next couple of weeks, to get a survey on where they think the location will be, because I think that's going to make or break the vote. If someone's going to vote yes, and they were not asked, they don't like the location, they might vote no. Also, that our community members probably have ideas of things that we hadn't even thought of yet. And so more survey and some more workgroup workshops where people can push out their ideas somehow, maybe even one of those systems that you guys already use that you send out to parents. Let's see. Possibly even partnering with the city of Monroe to see if you can send a flyer with something that they send out. So you get community members along with the parents of students. Let's see. One of the reasons of rebuilding at Sky Valley current site would be the gym, the shop, and the art studio, which also has a pottery kiln. These are things that we will not be able to replace. I'm sure our budget is not going to be able to give us that same-sized gym, shop, and art studio. Let's see, that way, the location being on-site there, if it's at Frank Wagner or at the other site, you'd have the issue of people crossing the street. And there was a child that was hit by a car and killed there, you know, over 15 years ago, but still on Kelsey Street there, I think that would not be a good idea. Let's see. So please consider the third site of rebuilding at Sky Valley, and please get more community feedback about the location before you make your final decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Brandy. Jacqueline.
Hi, my name's Jacqueline Elsie. I don't, kind of like the other mom, I don't have, I think that the student said it really well. I've been, this is my third year at Sky Valley with my kids, and the inspiration that I've seen them have for learning has been just unbelievable. My daughter is the redhead that came up here first, and when she first started, she was many years behind. And now she's ahead in some subjects. And that is because the teachers there inspire her. My kids just love it there, and the community, all the parents are just amazing. So I'm just here in support of a new building for that school because, like everybody said, it needs, they need a new building. There's a lot of things, a lot of issues, a lot of classrooms that get shut down. We've been going into one of our teachers' classrooms through a back door these last few weeks because it's the only door accessible, you know, just all types of issues that are going on. Last year, their whole classroom was shut down for the first, like, few months of school and a lot of complications, so it would be really great to have a new building.
Thanks, Jacqueline. Carolyn.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Carolyn, and my son attends at Sky Valley. And the reason we chose to go to Sky Valley is because we feel like he gets a better education there. And the parents are encouraged to be involved, and I want to be involved. And I had a friend who, she claims her daughter was injured because of the light ballast that we all know now were toxic. And she sued the district, and I don't know how true what she's saying is. But I was told that the problem had been fixed and that it was now safe. And so we chose to go to Sky Valley. However, every year, they remediate, re-mediate the buildings because they fail their tests of toxicity. So all this time, we're being exposed to something. That's clear, or they wouldn't be continually doing this work. And so this is an unsafe building, and the program is absolutely fantastic. So I believe the ethical thing to do is to find or create a space for this building to exist where people aren't being exposed to toxic materials. Thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, we have the Facility Advisory Recommendation/Bond Consideration.
All right, we're going to jump right in. Jesse, if you could get that going, please. So I just wanted to do a quick reminder as to how we got to this spot tonight for the special board meeting. And there has been, it's definitely been a couple of year process to get to where we're at right now, and which started two years ago when I was hired and you all asked me to facilitate the development of a strategic plan. The part of that was simply to go out and listen to our community members before we built out a draft plan. So as you remember, it was a great opportunity for me as the new person in the district to meet with well over 100 people through one-on-one meetings, small groups, large groups. And then we did a lot of surveying through our survey tool as well. And through those listening tours over and over and over and over again, one of the themes that came up was we really need to have a plan, a long-range facilities plan. And of course, just like the folks that came here tonight, one of the top priorities of the community, what people heard about the most was, happened to be Sky Valley. And of course, you know, we have more needs outside of Sky Valley as well. So we built into our strategic plan the, this strategy to get a Facility Advisory Committee together, which you authorize this group to get together to begin meetings so that this group can make a recommendation to you all to develop a plan and figure out a way to fund the plan as well. So all of last school year, this team was meeting. The Facility Advisory Committee had five meetings. And at the end of our time together, in August, the Facility Advisory Committee made a recommendation, which I'll review here tonight as well. Since that recommendation was made by the Facility Advisory Group, we've had three board work sessions as well where you've poured over a lot of data along the way. So just board deliberations. I wanted to make it clear to you all, just remind you and the people that are tuning in, that much of the deep dive into our facilities took place at a board meeting a couple of years back, and we reviewed the 2022 Facility Study and Survey. So that was kind of just, I remember we actually had the meeting at Sky Valley, I think, in the library there to go over. All right, this is what the study and survey is recommending that we do. You've also reviewed the Facility Advisory Committee Recommendation. We've looked at a couple of different options for Sky Valley. As you recall, there were only two, there were two options for a new Sky Valley that was brought by the committee that was either at the Wagner Center or Memorial Field. I did talk to the consultants about the possibility of putting a new Sky Valley on the existing site. And in my experience in other districts, when you are looking at doing a tear-down and then a buildup of a new school, it's great when you actually have the existing real estate right there to do so. I was in a district where we had an old school, much like Sky Valley. We had room on the north side of that property where Bond passed, of the Kate School in Burlington. Our students got to watch a new school being put up right behind us during that school year. And then on the last day of school, a wrecking ball came in and tore down the school that we were in. And then they gave them time to do all the work on that building during the summer so that could be a parking lot and they can move in. We do not have that luxury at the current Sky Valley site. There's a lot of unknowns when it comes to, definitely, we talked about just leveling that site, and there's going to be a lot of environmental concerns and mitigation work that we have to do with materials, et cetera, to get those things offsite. There's just a lot of unknowns as far as how long will that take? Where would we put our students if during a year or two, if that's what it took to get that site prepped and ready to go for a new building? So again, our committee didn't talk about that. We landed on those two spaces, but the consultants gave us feedback on the potential there. You all have reviewed the financial and tax scenarios with D. Davidson a couple of meetings ago, Corey Plager. And then you also heard from our consultant, Megan Garrett, who met with 70-plus stakeholders, and she gave us a little bit of feedback as to maybe a path forward. So I want to jump into just, well, one quick thing tonight, here's what I'm hoping that we can get to either at this meeting or September 29th, either consensus perhaps on accepting the committee recommendation or adjustments to the recommendation, that's a decision that the board still needs to make, of course, and then get some consensus on a placement of a new Sky Valley Education Center. So those are the two main topics for tonight. As a reminder, the committee brought forward a four-part recommendation that included a new Sky Valley Education Center, a whole slew of major maintenance items, early learning facility needs, and then special education facility needs. I do want to remind you, Board, that you have a copy of the Facility Master Plan that I believe is on our website for anyone that wants to see what came out of the committee. But as a reminder, as I've gotten, people have asked me about this, as far as the updates and enhancements to meet early programming needs, that would more specifically take care of dedicated pre-K and kindergarten restrooms within the classrooms, dedicated kindergarten play areas, additional restroom enhancements to meet some of our little learner needs, and then classroom storage and enhancements to meet program space needs. That's for the early programming needs, and then for the special ed programming needs, again, more improved storage and support spaces for speech, OTPT, dedicated play areas, expanded spaces and updated walls within our special education programs, and then restrooms within and for our special education program rooms, as well as kitchenettes where appropriate, and then the addition of changing tables as well. So those are just, and again, you can go back and review all of that in the Facility Master Plan. So that was the committee's recommendation, and they were, as you recall, they were quick to say, we don't really have a priority list. These are the four equally weighted items. And there's the dollar amount that was recommended by the committee as a reminder. The Sky Valley HK Center, if we were to modernize the Wagner Center and then rebuild a portion of the new Sky Valley at the Wagner Center, it'd be about $62 million. If we were to rebuild Sky Valley at Memorial Field, it's about $10 million more. I'll remind you why in a moment. And then, of course, you see our major maintenance, early learning, and special education projects as well. And then we looked at this option, Sky Valley, a new Sky Valley at Memorial Field, which would be adjacent to the current Sky Valley at Memorial Field. And we also looked at an option where we pushed that over onto Marshall Field, and we all took a look at that as well, and we talked about the pros and cons of that particular option. Really, the pro there was simply improved usage to the memorial filled areas. It's like we have space, we have land that we can build new on, and that was considered a pro. The cons would be, Memorial Field, as you know, it's come up well before my time here, that's a revered piece of property for us, and it's well-used right now. And it's a filled option that we would not have at that spot. And then it did not mediate other major maintenance costs, so in the next option, if it is at the Wagner Center, you can see that the front of the school there, of the Wagner Center, we have about space for six classrooms there. So the cost that was included in that recommendation includes modernizing all the current square footage, not the performing arts piece that would remain as-is, but the front of that, the building where the classrooms are at, it would basically be gutting that building down to the concrete walls, and you would not recognize it going in. It would just be basically a new build within those walls. It's obviously It's obviously cheaper per square foot in, in that, in that space. And then jutting off the north of the Wagner Center would be a two-story building that would be all the, the brand new space for Sky Valley Education Center. Also in this scenario, you can see that phase, the phase two projects from the 2015 bond, there's a, a new gymnasium off of Frank Wagner that you can see that little white rectangle there would be a, a new gym on that, on that site. And remind me, Adam, the current Wagner Center gym, would we need to do some work on that? We maintain the bones of that, correct? And then?
Yeah, there'd be some remediation work, but nothing major.
Thank you. That's what I thought. The, the other thing is this, and we had one of our public commentators tonight bring this up. There's a process that takes place when you pass a bond that you, you really can get far more detailed into the spaces that, because right now, the, the, basically our consultants just said, look, here's what it costs right now to build new per square foot. And here's what it costs to modernize per square foot. If we were to pass a bond, we'd go through something called the educational specifications process, where we had to look at all the space within that square footage to determine what does the, what are the classroom learning environment? What would that look like? You know, someone brought up a shop. We've talked about that. Someone brought up a, a bigger, maybe a bigger meeting space. It's a, a non-traditional classroom space. But that's, that doesn't happen here. It happens once we know that we're going to have funding. And then there's a committee of, of staff members, architects, et cetera, that say, what do you need to make this space the best space for your current program needs? So the pros and cons for this one, there were definitely more pros as it pertained to cutting down the cost, because you saw it was about $10 million less to do it here. There are some major maintenance costs that are absorbed within this project. If we have it at the Wagner Center, we're going to replace the roof at the, at the Wagner Center either way, right? If we build a new Sky Valley and Memorial Field, then there's additional costs to do the roof in addition at, at the Wagner Center. So there's some, there's some dollars saved there. You all brought up as a reminder that and we've heard from our community, there's a lot of concern in regards to are we maintaining and utilizing our current space? People are wondering what's going on. And we know we use the Performing Arts Center, but can you repurpose the old elementary school there? I can't tell you the number of people that have come and told me since Chuck shared his stories, people that in the community that went to school there. And I think it'd be pretty cool if we, we, we were actually using it as such. The, one of the cons that was brought up was that the, are they swifts? The, the birds? That we would be keeping that, the smoke stack there. And they, they would work around the birds essentially. We've been assured that, that any of the work, if there's any repair work that would need to be done on that, that we would be doing it outside of the times that there was action happening there. But I've been shocked the number of people that have actually come up and asked about that one too. So it's a big deal in this community, clearly. So there's the, 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 the two options you looked at. And then, again, as a reminder and a review, we'd be addressing all that major maintenance and that spread amongst all nine of our, our school sites. You'll see Leaders of Learning is not included. There are portables now. I've told you, I've mentioned this publicly, and then I've met with you one-on-one about this, that, that we are looking at a, not a new model necessarily, but a new place for those students to, to go to school. We've been looking at potentially taking a, we, we have space in Monroe High School. This is for another meeting, of course, but we've talked to the staff and the students about this last year. And then the Monroe High School staff, potentially, again, planning stages that we'd be looking at a dedicated wing for our Leaders High School. So that, a couple of things, one, it would have more seamless and easy access now that they're both on the same schedule. Two courses that could help them become more future-ready. Leaders is a great program for our students. And they're limited in what they can offer from a course standpoint, because they don't benefit from the economy of scale. So I don't want you all to, to think that Leaders is left out of the conversation. Quite the opposite. We're trying to figure out how do we use our existing nice spaces for that particular program? So those are the other nine sites that we have and a lot of work in each of those. And then here was our committee recommendations from a cost standpoint, plus the roofing, which is unbelievably expensive, all the roofing. But we've got on the left is Sky Valley at the Wagner Center. And then with all of our projects, early learning, special education, the roofing. And on the right-hand side, you see if we had a Sky Valley at, at, at Memorial Field. You can see the cost is higher. And sorry, I missed a few numbers on the total on the right. It'd be cool if it only costs that much. But on the less expensive option, the $151 million option, I had Corey Plager round that up to 152 million. But when he met with us last week, he gave us the cost per $1,000 of assessed property valuation. In our school district, the average home market value is about 750,000. That's not the assessed valuation. It's less than that assessed valuation. But that would be an increase of about $38, $39 per month for that average cost of that particular home, less if we're going with the assessed valuation versus the market valuation. And so there's the two options that we've looked at. And then finally, I'm going to finish with kind of the end in mind. Once you reach consensus on the bond amount and on the Sky Valley Education Center location, what we'd be doing is we'd be working with our staff and our consultants on refining the bond package details. Because every, all, all of those are pretty upper level. And then once you say, all right, we want this option, and we start planning in earnest to make sure that we have a, a good details, even better details, more, more refined. And then our bond council will draft a formal resolution and some, some sample about, or really ballot language that you will review at an upcoming meeting. And then you would be taking official action at some point on a, on a, on a potential resolution. Then we file it with the auditor. And then we begin community information and engagement campaigns at, at that point. So that's my last slide. So really hoping tonight to get some direction on overall bond amount to go with the committee recommendation or something less than that. And number two, where to place a new Sky Valley if you decide that's what needs to be done. And I'm, I'm going to go home now. You guys can just, just get in.
Okay, so just clarification from the last meeting. The last meeting, we were figuring out if the new gym for Frank was included in the 61 million. If we were to build off of Wagner Center or if it was not, did we figure that, that out?
Yeah, no, we did. Yep, we did not. They, they, they have not given us that information yet. No, not yet.
Yeah, we're waiting on a kind of a package from them with a few items, including that.
So one of the things that I'm concerned about is it looks like a lot of the recommendations were to say, okay, the facilities committee, looking at a lot of the options, really likes the idea of Wagner Center. So if this were the case, we're going to go that direction. Either way, Sky Valley, I'll just say this publicly this way, Sky Valley is the gem of our district. Sky Valley's building is the embarrassment of our district. And that's not a secret or news to anyone, obviously. It, we need this new building. The students deserve this new building. That's we don't even, like, that's obvious. The concern that I have is if before we make any decisions moving forward, we need to have that kind of information in front of us. Because otherwise, we're making finite, gigantic final, financial decisions that then potentially go to asking for voters for things that we're not even 100% sure of what it includes. Like something like a gym. We're not talking about how many shelves are in a classroom. We're talking about extremely huge, major, major square footage. And so I think that having that kind of information is really important before we go forward. Because what we can't have is kids walking two blocks or a block and a half to go use an old gym on a different property or something like that. That's just not, not an option at all. And so those types of things of understanding, what does that include? What is the size of this new gym? Is it a refurbishment of the existing gym? Or do we build a new building or a new portion of that in the new build? And what is the $62 million, around $62 million actually included for that process? Because if it doesn't, then we need to sit here and say, okay, well, then we need to factor that in so that we actually have that kind of a space. And what does that look like? Is that another 15 million or 10 million or 5 million? And those are just numbers out of the air, but those are the kinds of things that I would like to have a little more clarity on before we start moving forward.
I know, I'm not sure, maybe you and I are, are understanding Molly's question a little bit different. That the total amount that we have is the most that we're going to spend. And that, that would be in, so on the current Sky Valley, if it's at the Wagner Center, we would be utilizing that existing gym. That's in the bond package. The, the wondering that Molly and Adam and I had was that we thought we might have been double counted on the costs of, of, of doing the Frank Wagner gym next to it. So at the very least, at, at best, we have an extra 10 million that we, or whatever it costs to build that Frank Wagner. At worst, it's at, it's 150 million on the, on the lesser option. So we're not going to be adding to it.
That makes more sense. And so, but still regardless, it doesn't negate the fact that we need more information before we move forward. Because we, what's not fair to our voters and our taxpayers is saying, oh, we're asking for 62 million for this portion of the total amount, but we really only needed, you know, 55 million. And so we're asking for an extra 6 million that we actually didn't need into the budget. It's nice to have it. We like that. That's always a great thing. But then that puts an undue tax burden on our taxpayers that we don't want to do either.
So let me hit that. If, so remember, we, we, really what we need direction on is what projects do you want done? So don't worry, and with respect, don't worry about the amount yet. Because once you say, these are the projects that we want, the most that we have, and we, that everything's included in that 152 million. There's a caveat to that, and I'll explain that. Once you say, hey, we want to do these things, then we, we will come back with, we, as far as a resolution or something that would be on the ballot, my assumption would be moving forward that if it's less money than we thought, we would be asking the voters for less money. And then the, the little caveat is we do have state matching dollars that will come along. We do not know how much yet. We think it's 10 to 13 million probably. And the, the thing that we've just barely talked about here was the fact that that money would come in handy, because what we don't have in that overall bond amount is the cost of tearing down the existing Sky Valley. And that's a moving target between eight and 12 million is the best estimate. But that state matching dollars that come in, that would offset the costs of, of, of doing that. So again, the, not to be redundant, the direction that I would need is from, is there, is there, you want to do, generally speaking, what the committee recommended or something far less than half of that, quarter of that, just Sky Valley? And then that'll give us a little bit more information to work from.
Thank you.
Yeah, one thing that is very much on my mind is that in order to get funding for this bond, we need 60% of the vote. And that is not an easy thing to do. So last meeting, we heard from our consultants and we got a lot of good feedback from the community. And I very much appreciate everyone showing up today and giving us more feedback. And a key piece was, you know, the school district needs to use the buildings I already have. You know, that's, that's, I'm not saying that's a majority sentiment, you know, but that was, that was one of the feedback. And be, you know, the, I would say, everyone agrees, we need to be responsible with our resources. So for those two reasons, I feel pretty strongly, we should go with the Frank Wagner location as well as the major upgrades to the rest of the schools. I think this is something that needs to be done. If we don't get funding for it, you know, we can have that discussion of like, what is, you know, the, the heater could go out in one of our schools or something like, something pretty bad. Or the roof starts leaking. So with those two things in mind, I would like to go through this process once, get it approved and go with our best option to get that. I think that's the, the lower dollar amount plus using our, some of our existing infrastructure in Wagner Center.
I agree with Director at Scorn. I like it at Wagner Center. I'm also curious, and I think we talked about this in our meeting, just about Marshall Field. If we have numbers to see what it would cost to get that up and running so that kids at both of those schools or just anyone in our community has access to those fields. And that's the football field and both baseball fields.
Yeah, so I forgot to also mention that the, the total cost that was brought forward to the committee for the Wagner Center option would be about 151 and change. I asked Corey Plager to run $152 million one, just to round it off, A, and then B, we knew some of those things are floating out there as far as some improvements to the current fields. And that, that's come out loud and clear in all my meetings with folks. And as you guys have heard since as long as you've lived here. So Adam's getting some, some soft estimates on what if we had an, you know, we could do anything, we're from a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements to a couple million. And so we're, we're getting some estimates on irrigation for Memorial Field, new, new grass, maybe redoing the cinder track, not the other way. Obviously, we don't have the need for that, but at least make it nice around it. And then updating Marshall and then Park Place as well. So we'll come back with some options, but, but just from my thinking at this point, if, if our total amount's at 151 and we had about 900,000 of wiggle room in there, you could, you could, one, you can do a couple of things. You could direct us to spend no more than a half a million, 900 or just or more, but we could come back with a couple of different levels for you. But I, right, we could do a lot of work, correct, Adam, for 900,000 on dedicated to those three fields. And that's what that was rounded up to.
I think that it's important for us to consider that. And for those of you guys on the board that have been here a whole lot longer, many of you guys are longtime community members. My wife and I have only lived here five years. But from what I understand in our last bond, one of the big pushes and the because, because community members have made comments about this, and it's very perfect timing, talking about our facility use for our next agenda item, because these play together, is one of the reasons that this was passed last time was, and, and it's been a stickler, is the community said, we want to pass all these things for the, the, the fields that we have and the access, because it was promised by the board at that time of saying, hey, this isn't just for the schools. This is for our community to be able to use as well. And I feel like the last few years, it's almost like a fight that we have had to have, which seems kind of weird that we're the school board and we have to fight to have our, our facility be able to actually utilize our fields to make that happen. And we've been able to make that happen. But I think the same thing is, is we're looking and we say, go before our voters. And we say, hey, here's a, here's a proposal that we have to present to you. Tell us what you think. But if we include and say, hey, for a very small amount more, that really, when you look at the dollar amount of what the tax burden is, it's insignificant. And the comparison of everything saying, this includes downtown fields to continue for our, for our community to be able to be a part of. And actually make that happen in the beginning, I think for us as the board in this term, I think is something that says, you know, this is important. As a part of it, this isn't just a Sky Valley thing. This is about all of our buildings, all of our schools. Yes, Sky Valley is a major component of that, but also the fact of saying this includes the field usage for our community as well is a huge deal, especially for downtown fields.
So I'm for moving it to Wagner Center. And I also agree with Director at Scorn on getting all of these things done on our list of things to do for all of our buildings. I think it's like 150 items, a little over that maybe. Yeah. And it's super basic things to like, just fixing a broken curb on some of them for our schools. So I think that it, if it helps keep kids safe and enhances their learning experience in our, in Monroe, then we should probably do that. I also really appreciate and love that we're honoring our history in the Monroe School District by updating or looking at updating and preserving Marshall Field as well as the Wagner Center. Chuck can go in there and relive all his memories. Right, Chuck? Eighth grade.
I've been sharing some memories about Frank Wagner, which I will not relay, but I have I think my dad went to school there and my brother and I did during that time. You know, I'm in, I'm in favor of the school being located at Frank Wagner. I was part of the facilities committee. We did a lot of pros and cons. We looked at we did a lot of work to determine the size of the school, the number of students and the capacity. We also looked at the, the usage, the proper usage, or whether the building was at Whether the building was at capacity over capacity. When we got this list of. Of work that needs to be done. I mean, there's a hundred and fifty items. It really, you know, from a school director, it's really difficult to take that information and go, well, we do this, this, this. And not do that because we're not involved in the facilities uh, like Adam is, know what's wearing out. The one thing I have is is a graph of the roofs. And there must be, I don't know, there must be twenty or thirty of them and the. In this consideration, so you know, they're all expensive more than you would think. But there's different uh, life expectancy for roofs. And some could be, you know, that are fine, what some might make it to. We're gonna hear twenty twenty eight, there's a twenty thirty. The numbers are all over the place in terms of the the life expectancy. So that seems pretty reasonable to have roaster place and is that like eleven million of that? Okay, so that's.
Correct, yeah.
That's a good amount. And then we also have facility upgrades uh, like the gyms and uh, modernization for different. Different schools. But the for me, looking at things is favor the school. Frank Wagner, the amount, the size, the purpose. Also utilizing the space. I mean, that thing's built like a a rock. It is literally rock, uh, all concrete. Probably the only thing that would last after a major earthquake in this entire area. But that makes sense and then put in a new building along there. I like the uh, the space. You know, there's also pros and cons we were looking at in terms of uh, traffic and buses and a number of things. But in favor of that, the I would say it's best to go with uh, the full amount for the uh, for the building upgrades and the necessary repairs. Because it is, schools need to be kept uh, kept proper repaired. Delayed maintenance has its uh, problems in the future. So. Uh, with those considerations and there's a lot of considerations for folks, public, there's a lot of considerations for things. So the recommendation, uh, the work that we've put in, the evaluation. And then the the upgrades that need to be happening to the to the building. Our existing structures and we have a lot of them. I'll tell you a little story. When I was uh, this was almost thirty years ago, I was at a Rotary meeting, been a member of the Rotary many years ago. I don't know if you ever remember uh, Superintendent uh, Bill Prenevo. Probably not. He came to a Rotary meeting and he was talking about. Uh, talking about the bond to pass a new, to build a new high school. And so I was there at that meeting and the presentation and it made sense. And we were looking at the repair costs for things and I'm in the high school. It's like, my gosh, didn't we just build that thing? Well, the roof's thirty years old, the windows are thirty years old. When you look at the, you know, we build good buildings. School district, the state or whomever, but they do wear out and there is times that need uh, maintenance and upkeep. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, so I told you from the beginning, we needed a new Sky Valley. It doesn't matter where we just need it. I've been in that building for over seven years now going. This is my eighth year with my three kids. We need a new Sky Valley, so wherever that happens to be, whether it's Memorial Field or Wagner Center, I am a hundred percent okay with that. My one main question is, given the state of the economy, the facts that taxes are rising, gas taxes, everything else. I do not want to overburden our community and looking at a bond amount of a hundred and fifty two million dollars seems like a lot. And when we break it down, Corey told us that sixty two dollars a year for one hundred thousand, doing the math. That is, let's see, times average house price is four hundred and sixty five extra dollars a year for um, house price, median house price in Monroe of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I just want to make sure that we're being as responsible as we can. This is a bond I do not want to fail. Because we've asked for too much. So, you know, one of the things that comes to mind, now I know that every single school in this district is important. But Sky Valley is the one that has been overlooked year and year and year again. So in looking at this, looking at just even a potential area of where we could downsize this budget a little bit. We have thirty five thousand dollars to renovate the wing of Frank Wagner that has not been touched yet. It's not a toxic wing. It's not unsafe. It absolutely still functions. It's still usable. In my mind, when I look at this, I don't look at it and think this is an absolute necessity. This needs to be done now. And if we were going to be able to do anything, giving Frank Wagner a new gym, but cutting out a decent chunk of money and maybe going, hey, let's save this for later. Because, you know, we have the ability to do that. It's still running great and it's not at the end of its life expectancy by any stretch of the imagination. Can we lower the cost of this and bring this down a little bit closer to a hundred and twenty thousand doll, hundred and twenty million dollar mark? To make it more palatable for our community and give this bond a better chance at passing so that Sky Valley can finally have a new building. So that's just my question to you and thinking about, you know, kind of going through the way that things are and listening to, her name was Megan, right? Yeah, listening to Megan and all of the feedback that she gave us and just sitting here and mulling over all of these numbers and looking at the levy amount that we are going to try to run again. Which should not be higher than the levy amount that we ran last time, but trying to make sure that we are being responsible with what it is that we bring in and that we're not overburdening our community. By asking for too much. I want to give us the best chance possible at getting this, moving this forward. So that's my, I'm putting it to you. Give me some of your feedback on this.
I think it's a really good point and we need to be good stewards of the community's funds. I think a couple of things that were brought to our attention last week is that. Twenty eighteen and before, our taxes for schools was much higher than now and much higher than um. We are proposing. So it was like four dollars and thirty eight cents total uh, in twenty eighteen. Currently, we're at two dollars and twelve and we're proposing to go up to two dollars and ninety five. That's per hundred thousand. That's total. That's current bonds and all all taxes on schools. Um, that being said, I think getting down to a hundred and twenty million would be incredibly difficult. So on our renovations, like I said, we start, we all agree, we need a new building. And I think that seventy ish million is going to be hard to uh, come down on our uh, repairs or renovations. Thirty, what is it thirty, almost thirty two million is on priority one and priority two. This is like safety and, you know, things that need to be repaired now or in the near future. And this bond is supposed to fund our schools, at least our facilities and our buildings for the next ten years. So then then we get into like priority three through five. These are things that don't need to be done now, but probably over the next. You know, ten years, but that's only two point two million of priority three, four, five. And then another, I guess the the area then to pick at is the phase two of the twenty fifteen bond, which is the fifty three billion. I'm not sure what's all included that I don't know, Sean, or someone else can shed some more light on that number.
So A- Adam's going to be able to kind of break it down here in a moment, but it would be fully modernizing the the old part of Frank Wagner. And that's the part that Molly's suggesting not not doing. And then it would also be um, uh, also uh. Uh, replacing the current gym at Salem Woods. So these are both items that in the last bond. Basically, it was said that, hey, you're next. We're going to do this now and next time we got, that's my understanding and is if Aaron's here, I might be getting that wrong. I don't think she is. Aaron is. Is that correct? Okay, sorry, Aaron. Um, so basically, when we went out in two thousand fifteen or they went out, it was like, here we go. This is now. But school districts every ten, fifteen years go out again and next time we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do this. And so that, so those are, that's the the biggest expense is Frank Wagner, uh, modernizing the back, the old bit part of it and then the Salem Woods gym, right?
Correct, and Frank Wagner includes the kitchen and cafeteria as well. And then we believe it includes the gym and this is where we were wondering or adding a a larger uh, more traditional gym, separate gym. Um, versus kind of what they have now, and this is where we were trying to get some clarification if if we are double dipping, for lack of better words, for. The phase two for that gym versus a Sky Valley going to Wagner Center if both of those numbers might actually. Again, they're rough numbers, but those may have actually included like you were asking earlier. Both included the gym replacement.
I agree with Director at scorn and and Director um, President Bumpus uh, that we, I think Wagner Center is probably. Is the is the best use of current facilities. It is the cheaper of the options. It honors the history of our community, which I think is a beautiful thing. It beautifies Main Street, which the city just passed their own thing to redo almost across the street. Uh, our new city hall as well, which is a part of us investing in the community of Monroe as well. Um, it leaves more field available for community members to be a part of and builds into that. I think this concern I have is if, okay, the gym difference is a three million dollar difference or two million dollar difference. Or if we nitpick the the lowest of the priorities of things that need to be modernized that are priorities, as you said, three, four and five. And we change this by two and a half million dollars. In the retrospect of that, I know optics are a big deal, a hundred and fifty million dollars, a hundred and fifty two million dollars is a very large number. But when it comes down to the actual burden to our taxpayers, as we all are. Um, you know, and I did the same numbers, a little different, you got the same results, four and sixty five dollars a year per family. The change of a few million dollars in the total tax bill spread among all of our communities. Members were talking about, okay, you don't spend four hundred and sixty five dollars on average home value. Uh, you know, family member, you're spending four hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty two cents, and it really doesn't make that much of an impact. I think our messaging is a huge deal of the breadth of this. This isn't just a Sky Valley thing. That's a major portion of it and very much needed. But the hard part is my concern is, yes, I don't want to over ask our community and then it says no, and then we're all up a crick and everybody fails and everyone loses. But at the same token, for us to turn around and say to Salem Woods, hey, we promised you ten years ago, you're up next, but sorry, your grandkids will get it though, we'll get them, you know, and that's the same kind of a thing of. You have to sit here and say who wins and who loses. How do we actually help all of our students win? And that really is our, the the five of us, that is our job. How do we get all of our students in Monroe to win? And there's a lot of major, I don't think that these are wants, these are needs. These are safety issues. These are, you know, roofing issues. We're not saying we want a state of the art cool thing. We're saying we want something that functions so that it can actually help our kids and they can be safe. And and I think that if we try and nitpick it, nitpick it down, and I was even sitting there going through the priority list and just. Re revisiting it even today in the Excel document and I'm going. What do you choose to, what what kid do you say, sorry, you don't, you don't get this and it's not even a want, it's a need. And in the end of it, it changes the tax burden by a pizza for the year for a family. And I know money is tight and I know taxes are going up and we live in the wonderful infinite state of Washington with all of our wonderful taxes that we all love so much. Sorry, I'm dripping with sarcasm. Uh, but at the end of the, at the end of the day, this isn't, this is about how do we help our kids and this is the reality. The other part of it is, and I'm looking back through and I remember the last time we ran a levy and Corey gave us the numbers. The tax burden that the Monroe School District families pay in comparison to other families in our area. Is drastically lower than every one of our neighbors. No one wants to pay a penny more on their taxes than they have to. I get it. I'm right there with you. I'm not a fan. But at the end of the day, when you sit here and say, but this directly benefits the community that you live in. And the biggest tax burden that you pay on your property values directly benefits. It's not, it's not going to Olympia. This is going back into Monroe. And so for me, that means a whole lot more and makes me as a parent want to say, yeah, even if my kids aren't in the school district anymore. They are, but it down the road, I will be a taxpayer still with this burden when my two children are no longer Monroe School District students. And so to sit here and say, yeah, but I still believe in our kids. I still believe in my community and I would rather have my tax dollars. Go to take care of my community members than just go to Olympia and go for into whatever nebulous that you don't know. And so I think that it's, it is a scary thing to say, are we over asking? You know, and and I think that it's really hard to say, I mean, there, I'm sure we could find a few things here, but we're talking about maybe tens or hun, or a few hundred thousand dollars. But at the end of the day, because of the the breadth of this, that's a large amount of money, but the actual tax burden is almost negligent. I don't know if I said that right. Why? Does that make sense? And so for me, I land on, I think that the Wagner Center is a great option for a location. And yeah, I want clarity on, does it include the gym? Do we double dip that? So does it mean that it 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 would go down to a hundred and forty five million or a hundred and forty million, whatever that is? Um, but and that's always a win for our community, but then at the same thing, we have been so. So concerned with our fiscal responsibility. We got millions of dollars in the bank and our neighbors around us are going bankrupt and closing schools and laying off staff members. And we actually have money in the bank. We've been tight on our finances. We have worked our tail off to be able to refinance our current previous bond to give three and a half million dollars back to our voters currently. And we're trying to squeeze every cent because we recognize that it's a sacrifice for our community members to give that. I think if we can continue to have that kind of messaging, my hope is we can have more than sixty percent of our voters say, yeah, we have confidence in that and that's our commitment to them. It's hard and it scares me that they would say, no, you asked for too much. But at the same token, you can't sit here and say, well, we asked for a little bit, but little so and so over here doesn't, is going to have a screen up education because, you know, he's got a hole in the roof and we can't fix it.
Uh, I just wanted a couple of other things we found out on Thursday. So the sixty two cents is very conservative. It's point seven five percent higher than the current interest rates. Interest rates are projected to come down. Of course, nothing's guaranteed, but we can ask um, our consultant to rerun the numbers as we get closer. Before finalizing uh, our whole marketing campaign and everything, so. I expect that number to come down. Also, our population is growing, our property value is increasing. And this um, our our other consultant, sorry, I forgot her name, but uh, she'd said it's weird, it's in a very good position to ask for money right now. So I think that all signs are pointing towards ask for what we need because that was the time to do it.
I have a quick question that relates to that. I'm sorry, I was going to be done, but that brought up another question and it's just out of curiosity. Sean, are you, I mean, I know you're aware of this, but are are you aware of where we're at with our finances for homes being built in our area? Because we have a growing community. So across the street from the church that I pastor, we have, it's in the Monroe District, a hundred and ninety six townhouses being built. And then we have lots of other homes being built throughout Monroe. It's a growing community. And I know that there's a certain dollar amount and I cannot remember off the top of my head, but it's like, you know, if it's three thousand dollars per unit or whatever that goes into funding when you have a new home built. That goes towards schools and that's a tax that's paid at the point of sale of that. And there's a fund for that. Is that funding that we can access to help reduce the bond to to taxpayers? So we're talking about Washington State having matched funds, those types of things. What that does is my question is, can that help alleviate the tax burden to people as well or is that available?
Impact fees.
Impact funds, yeah.
Hey Brenda, I think Brenda's here. We can shoot. She's not in in the building, but can you see if she's in the audience on the? Jesse on the, I think she's on the Zoom. Yep, she is. So she's raising her hand. That's really cool.
Thanks, Brenda. You should be live, Brenda.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So the impact fees, when we did our capital projects plan. Um, that went into effect this year. We have zero impact fees for two years, meaning all of twenty six and all of twenty seven. However, we have the ability to go back out and redo our capital facilities plan. If we can demonstrate enrollment growth. So right now, our capital facilities plan, we are not collecting any impact mitigation fees at all. And in two years, we will do another capital facilities plan. And if we can demonstrate growth through our demographer, then we can build it back in. And if we have growth prior to that, then we can go out and revise our current two year capital facilities plan.
Brenda, do you have to do that every two years or is it something that we could say, hey, we even demonstrated growth this year? Because I know our enrollment is up from this year over last school year. And so is that something we can ask for those funds? Because they go to county, I believe. And then we submit them, we submit the request from county, isn't that correct?
We go through the county and then it goes through a county committee, a comma, uh, council. And um, they just voted several, a few months ago, less than half a year ago on the current two year plans. But again, we can go out and get it revised if we can demonstrate growth.
What is the cost of that? Because I know there's a fee for the service that we pay for. Because I know there's a fee for the service that we pay for for that, is it significant or?
That cost is the cost of our attorney. Who does all of the the work on the legal side.
So we're going to spend a few thousand dollars for the potential to gain several million? Is that realistic, a realistic estimate?
We could potentially collect several million if we have enough building going on, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So thank you, I think I have enough information now just to roll forward and bring back some more information at the twenty twenty ninth, I think, is that our next one, on the twenty ninth? And then if anything else comes up, just give me a call, anything else you want Adam and I to include on the twenty ninth. And then we'll go from there.
Would the twenty ninth be where we actually have a resolution go forward or will we wait one more meeting?
I, we can do, get a potentially a draft resolution, but definitely by the thirteenth for sure, but but maybe we can't even buy just a draft or some general language.
If it's possible to have at least a draft proposed at that time, I think that would just help us to be, have a better definition. And then in the meantime, is it possible to get some of those clarity on the gym numbers as well with Frank Wagner? Is that enough time?
Yeah, are we planning to get better budget numbers?
Yes.
I think we're probably where where we want to be, where we can actually start asking for some real numbers, because like I said, these are all, these are all just rough budget numbers, so.
And I know we're working with estimates at this point and the resolution isn't looking for a hard fixed dollar amount down to the penny, but but the better we can get that target narrowed down as we move forward, I know it's a slow focus, just the better it helps us make those decisions. And then we talk about all of this with our strategic plan even, you know, we talk about fiscal transparency, the more that we can have that available to our public and this is a huge deal. I mean, this is this, if we do this, this is a big ask and they're going to have a lot of questions and rightly so, because this impacts every family in our community.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item three point zero two, we have facility use fees for the twenty five, twenty six year, and this is the third reading, is there a motion? I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six facility use fees, was there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the twenty five, twenty six facility use fees discussion.
Yeah, I just want to pick up on this, I wanted to thank you, Adam, you, I know you put a lot of work into this and I know that we've asked you lots of questions to keep coming back and coming back for the second, third, fourth and twenty seventh readings.
Sure.
But I really appreciate your your summary page that you did, that you included in there that basically shows how we can lower the rates for our in district clubs and students that our students are actually getting the financial break, outside groups are getting a little bit better. And I think that I liked seeing that we were hoping that this would be the true, but having the Riverview District kind of helps us maybe have some more realistic and more conservative numbers. Do you feel confident with this?
Yeah, I like Riverview's numbers, they definitely kind of help bring down the average, which is kind of what we want to do, but we are if we go with the average for all of our groups with the exception of the indoor youth, I mean, our rates are going to go up a little bit, but we're average, so I feel good about that. And then I kind of manipulated the average to come up with some good numbers for our in district youth and I like working with averages, so this will help me for next year, so I'll kind of just follow the same plan and maybe not have to bring it to you three or four times.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm very appreciative that you were willing to work with that and that we were able to bring down the price, even if it was just by a dollar for use use of our facilities by our in district sports programs for our youth, that was something that was incredibly important to me. So I'm just very appreciative that you were able to make that happen and I think that everybody else that's up here is in agreement on that one. Just trying to make it more accessible and cheaper for the betterment of our students.
Thanks for being awesome. You have done such tremendous work and for years now, so thank you for just being awesome. People love you in our community and you just have done such great work in facilities and even continuing, like you're back to back in this meeting even today.
Well, and I have to make sure I saw Dawn on there and Stacy as well, they're the ones who really should take most of the credit for this.
Go Dawn.
Dawn asked me on Sunday, she's like, did you approve my numbers yet? I'm like tomorrow, tomorrow, Dawn, I hear you, Dawn.
Yeah, we just really appreciate the the back and forth and the way you've just been super open and transparent about this and the way you've really reached out to the community and a lot of this work, so thank you so much, Adam.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, thank you very much, Adam, appreciate your flexibility. So were the out of district youth and adult leagues fees increased to make up for the reduction?
They were, so going with the average, that increases their fees by a few bucks on average per hour. And so that'll more than offset what we would be losing if from not going with the average of the in district youth, does that make sense?
Okay, so are we still protected to break even based off our estimated?
I think we're going to end up, yes, yes, break even should be about where where we are again next year.
Do we add any more funds for the field maintenance or?
Not really, no, and those don't really carry over to my department, so that's a whole different discussion in reality.
Okay. All right, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Okay, there is a motion on the table, all in favor, raise your hand. It passed, Adam.
Thank you.
Five to zero. Okay, on to agenda item four point zero four, we have approval of the consent agenda, is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated September fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated September fifteenth, twenty twenty five, all in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Okay, and agenda item five point zero one, it is six 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 sixteen P M and tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thanks.